Call the meeting to order, verify the meeting notice and adopt the agenda if we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under our individual.
Before we get started tonight. The Whitnall community, the student community of district has had a tragic loss. Many of you are already aware of it. This community, the school district, Hales Corners, Greenfield Franklin, we all mourn the loss of Brittany Barnes Stabler. So I want to take just a moment in silence to recognize everything Brittany has meant to this school in the short period of time she was here. So please bow your head. As I said, today was a tragic day for the Whitnall school district. But yet somehow, some way, the school came together as a student body that just absolutely motivated me individually throughout the day. And that picture up there speaks a thousand words. Within less than 12 hours of this tragic event, we had our high school class on the athletic field, all dressed in red, Brittany's favorite color, in a hard shape to recognize. That speaks volumes for what this district is all about. And there are many people to thank, Rick Ellerson, Mr. Fran, but most important is the students of this school district that are coming. I think we are so fortunate to have this student body and I want to thank each and every student in this school district for what they've done and what this means to the Barnes Stabler family. Let's take this as motivation to carry forward because I know that's what Brittany would have wanted. If anybody else would like to make a comment.
Just wanted as a parent to let her parents know that it's got to be a tough time for them and glad that the Whitnall community is there for them.
On that, we're going to move to recognitions, item number three. Well, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I'll start reading. Which principal was going to do the presentation? I don't recall. I'm sorry. You do? All right. Well, why don't you start and then we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Jackie.
I think that the students that are here that helped us to all have been very supportive. I think last year we brought a group of students to you that helped to support two students in the cognitive disabilities program. And every hour of the day, we have multiple volunteers that help. They provide one-on-one assistance to the kids or help in the adaptive music class. So I'm going to give these guys an opportunity to introduce themselves and kind of tell you what their role is when they're in the class. Could be your help after that.
Lucky me.
We actually all volunteer some hours for a four-hour retreat class.
Emily Schmidt, who's involved in our four-hour retreat class. And just kind of building on what you said a lot, it's just showing the kids, most of them know kind of writing models, or just guiding them through kind of their process of what they have to do. It's a lot of just patience, but it definitely has taught me a lot on myself and what I'm doing, how to go in every day, knowing that life is difficult for us because we're always going to look forward to something. I know every morning I look forward to going in, seeing them, bringing a smile to my face, see how much fun they have had.
We agree that the volunteers will power that. And like we said, all of them, all of them proud of us. And I was proud first time about the community and then, oh, some of them are silly at times, but then go run the year, have their off days and it's just amazing with the, the tradition of running and sharing and different kinds of stuff that you try to learn and stuff like that. I really enjoy working with them.
It is like having anything we have, aside from the three of them, we probably have two to three students every class period. So you're talking about a large group of kids, probably 20 that helped the volunteers overall. And it's like having additional staff on hand that allows them to do extra things. But the social component that it brings to these guys and their awareness and understanding, as well as to the students that they're supporting is remarkable. So, thank you. We appreciate it. We hope to help students to build stronger in the future. As long as we're on the topic of the cognitive disabilities program and Mr. Noack is here, I do want to thank him. On his own time this year, he is doing an adaptive music class and it's absolutely amazing the music that the kids are able to use. And next year, we're actually running it as a regular class, but we're going to be on DVD. So if you want to share with me any new projects that they've done.
Yeah, basically, the most recent project that we did were music mobiles that the kids worked on. So basically, we went around the room and we talked about what their favorite bands were, what their favorite type of music was that they listened to. And we basically found different things in recording the music, such as different instruments or different styles that were used. And the kids found different pictures that we would hang in the mobile and we worked through that. Our new project that we're starting right now is they're actually working with the machine guitars. So it's been an absolute joy to work with them though, and I really appreciate Ms. Winter kind of bringing up the idea of that. And I've loved working with them and you both think it's, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Coach Larson and the girls basketball team. Coach Larson nominated the girls for the Wisconsin Basketball Coaches Association Teen Academic Award. This is something that over 400 schools applied for, and because of their hard work academically, they were awarded third place academic all-state. So we'll talk about it a little bit and then we have some awards for the girls.
Sure. Every year, we'd be very fortunate that our academics in our school, our district, our high school specifically, we have a very good GPA year in, year out. This year, I could tell it was a notch above the past, a little bit better. And we were saying a little bit better from a 3.7 or 3.8, that's what's talked highly of individuals. So from March, the Basketball Coaches Association, the NCAA sponsored, different levels of all-star recognition for playing ability, all-star games, also academics. So this year, I got the GPAs put into Mrs. Paul Whitten, the guidance did some transformations and calculations that was needed and submitted in March. And last Thursday, I got notification and got rewards in the mail that our girls' basketball program got third place all-state. So as Ms. Winter said, it's just a really very, very high crowd moment for us, the basketball program. I can't say enough about what it takes to be a student athlete, a juggled load of programs, and yet academics always comes first. Our program stands on its own and for those to succeed, not only on the court as we've had, but also, to say, in the classroom, it's just a real bring-out for the girls. So we've got awards for them. It's a medal like we did like in the Olympics, so I can hand them out now if that's okay?
We would like you to do that, Mr. Larson.
How many are seniors? We're losing some of y'all. That will do, if that's okay. Would you have the ladies say their name? Okay, so if you're familiar with who they are, some of you are in the class, but we've got a couple of seniors here. We're missing a few girls who are playing soccer tonight. They had a remake, a makeup match on South Watty. Well, they're not able to be here, but we'll refer you to, we'll watch for them. So, is there a name to her?
Chris is struggling. Yellow star. Will Simandis?
Oops, you bound traffic. Now they don't drop the ball like I dropped them.
Is that really Goffe? That really Goffe? And Ruby Bay?
Okay, so we have everyone here. Players that are at XF and soccer, you've heard of Camaro. And actually, our co-act rates are full of them, Gary Giagiole and Gavin Watts, according to the news that made it, also, obviously, very busy with football. Appreciate, appreciate your time tonight.
Okay, I have Colleen Watts with me tonight. She's actually going to do a presentation. Colleen is our GT consultant for both elementary schools. And she's going to give you a little information about our one of the years that we're going to be having great events.
This is Elliot Dunham. He lives in our grade three student group that's at Gilton Elementary School. And I have you here to honor him tonight for two different awards. I run two separate competitions at the fourth grade level. The first one is the George Masters competition. It's an analogy-based competition where students take three challenges throughout the school year. In the February challenge, Elliot was one of 65 students nationwide to score a perfect score on the challenge. So, and in doing so, he also finished first place in our district for fourth graders who received an award. So, congratulations, Elliot. The second competition that I offer for fourth grade students in our district is called Math Facts. Math Facts is a math competition where students compete in four challenges throughout the school year. And Elliot scored a perfect score on three of the four challenges in six seasons. They are above-grade limits, levels extremely difficult, and tied. So it is an excellent, excellent accomplishment to score a really perfect score on that attempt. He finished tied for first place with another student from New York State. And he helped Gilton Elementary School take second place in their division. So congratulations. I'm very proud of you and keep up the good work. Any questions?
Do we have, like, what was the question that was asked of him?
You don't want to embarrass yourself. I'd love to hear what I mean.
I'm the math champion.
Either or, or both.
What was the one you had trouble with that year? What was the one you had trouble with?
Always gonna keep changing, so we, I just see such a benefit to bringing our community, not our school community, those of you, the parents are already in love, you already know what's going on. But what about, you know, people like me who maybe moved into the community and don't know? You know, I wanna be connected in a real authentic way, helping our schools less dystopia than the ownership, uh, to, to be the best that they can be. So this is a great opportunity, but then it's just amazing as the other communities join in. Greendale, Greenfield, join, they're all passing resolutions, both our village and city halls are gonna pass the same as recreational system. It is an amazing opportunity to really expand our opportunities for students. That's what it's all about. How can you partner to provide their programs, maybe give you even more enriching opportunities that prepare you when you leave our system and go out into the real world? So I'm just really excited about it. It's complicated, it's, it's challenging because it's new. So if any of you have questions, then feel free to ask. At the last board meeting, when we talked to you about including Franklin, we decided once you start to branch off into Franklin, you have to do it overseas. So just so you know, we didn't, we didn't officially include them, but we are going to keep them in the loop and for sure gonna get all of our students and families in that other area involved in this and hold conversations with folks that live in Franklin because it's their community as well in your school, so.
One other thought that had, in the beginning, when this group were kind of rolling this idea of how this was going to come about, is I was kinda thinking, well, you know, I just wanna focus on the Whitnell district. But then I started thinking beyond that, really, when our students go off to college, it's not Whitnell, they're going to school with students from Greendale, Franklin, you know, and International. So, so you know, it, it seems to make sense that, um, we could broaden our base and we can share.
I'll just add, for maybe those of you that might not have heard, what we're going to do is go out and conduct listening sessions in all three communities. We set some goals, I think ours was somewhere between five hundred and a thousand people, which is a big goal to try to reach. Each community set their own goals at the last meeting. From those listening sessions, we wanna create what's kind of like a co-owned strategic plan. We'll actually, um, integrate it with our current plans, but keep the community involved. So this will be an ongoing process, we're not just gonna do this once, but we wanna see some sort of an annual report around the things that the community expects from us. So that's where this is going, a little different way of building a stronger relationship with our community and then with the surrounding communities and school districts. That's just a snapshot of what we plan to do.
What is, Tiffany, any comment?
I, I think it's, I think it's critical, I think it's necessary, and I think it's an almost unprecedented chance for all those communities to get together for as long as I've lived in this area. I don't think anyone's attempted, so this is an ambitious project, but definitely.
Good. Um, thank you. I, I, too, I'm a strong supporter and advocate of practices. Um, if we can take best practices from our neighboring communities, our school districts, and see how these are improved and what's been, it's hard not to be supportive of that. So, thank you for your efforts. I do challenge the committee to make sure you continue to set your goals and objectives that can be measured, so that we can really look at the success of this program and your knowledge, you know, so. Thank you again for your participation. I'm very happy to hear your statement. Um, next item is for equal critical contract changes.
Oh, Mr. Ellerson, come up and while he's doing that, um, this is a little history lesson. This is the old collective bargaining agreement we had with the teachers union. And then basically what he's gonna be talking about is in the back, there's always something called Appendix A, which was contained in this, in the contract itself and would list all the, the clubs, the activities, uh, the sports, and what each individual was paid. So now with, uh, the changes, um, it's, you know, it's up to us what we decide to do with it, and so I'll let Rick take it away, and Rick's gonna do the presentation on it now, and then, um, if we're, we're gonna make, take any action on it, it would be at the, in the next meeting coming up here. Go ahead, Rick.
You should have a couple of documents that I provided to you via email on this topic. There's two different ones. The first one addresses the coaching staff, the second one addresses our club advisors. Um, in order to arrive at the numbers that I arrived at for the coaches, I collected information from all of the Woodland Conference schools, and then I collected information from five different schools that are in our surrounding area, not connected to the Woodland Conference. And that information simply was assistant coaching salary and head coaching salaries for all of the sports that were relevant to us. What I did then is I put it into a spreadsheet, calculated the average head coaching salary, say, for head boys basketball coach. That comes up with a number, I did that same formula for assistant coaches, and proposed that we bring our school up to, well, first of all, we were the lowest paid coaching staff in all the Woodland Conference and the schools that I surveyed. St. Thomas More was, um, even ahead of us, and they are on a much more limited budget than we are. So, being a former coach myself, I thought that it was important to, and I, not one single coach asked for this, just so you are aware, there wasn't a single coach complaining that we weren't doing enough for our coaching staffs. This was something that was, what I wanted to do, to bring us up to what I thought was a fair dollar amount for coaches. Whenever, like Dr. Holt said, whenever there was negotiations for teaching staff and there were salary increases, the curriculars were left out of those increases, they never were included. John Quinlan is our Hall of Fame wrestling coach, he's been paid at the same amount for nearly thirty years. So, things haven't changed much, so that's where this all came from. So, now, what you have is the average that we would pay if agreed to, that we would pay across the schools that were surveyed. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest, we're not at the average. I also proposed the elimination of pay based on years of service. We had a situation that is in place where if you worked from zero to four years, you were paid this amount, and then four plus, you were paid a different amount. Uh, my rationale for doing so was, just because you're in your first through fourth year doesn't mean you're not a highly qualified coach. And just because you're in your fifth through thirtieth year doesn't mean you're a highly qualified coach that deserves more money. When we hire people, we hire them because we believe they're gonna do quality work, and we're gonna pay them, this is the rate, regardless of your years of service, this is what you're gonna earn as a coach in our district. So we, so we eliminated that years of service number. There's now three tiers. Head coaches are paid, depending on which tier you are in, how I arrived at the tiers is this. The baseball season in the summer is the shortest season that we have, yet the baseball head coach is compensated at nearly the same amount as the basketball coach, which is the longest season that we have. The basketball season runs about a hundred and thirty days, the baseball season runs sixty-seven. So to pay those two coaches the same amount, to me, seemed to not make a lot of sense. So the three tiers are, um, an average of a seventy-five day season, an average of a ninety day season, and an average of a hundred and five day season. So your head coaches, you have your average based on how long your season is, and then I did the same thing for the assistant coaches as well. It's a little bit, I don't wanna bore you with the minutia of the whole process, but I eventually broke it down to, after averaging those salaries, I broke it down to a per-day dollar amount. So, if you're a head coach, it came out to be roughly forty-five dollars a day that you were being paid. So if you're a seventy-five day coach, on average, you're getting seventy-five times forty-five, thirty-four hundred dollar amount. I did the same thing, average for a ninety day season, it's forty-five dollars a day times your ninety days. So, that's how it, that's how it all shakes out. And I'm sure there's plenty of questions about how it looks, 'cause it's not easy to explain, so I apologize. Before I go on to the club advisors, does anybody have any questions about the proposal for coaches?
So, it's from, kind of a tryouts to the end of the season, that's how, that's the season?
It's from the WIAA start date, which typically every one of our sports will start their tryouts on that date until the, until the end of the state meets, games, matches, whatever.
Whether we partake in that, whether we get that far or not?
Whether we get that far or not, and it's, again, that was something that I wrestled with quite a bit, too, because some might say, well, our football program hasn't been to state. How can you include the numbers for state as part of their total contracted days? My rationale for including that is, if you're a head track coach, you have thirty different possible ways that you can get somebody to go to state. You have jumping events, running events, throwing events of all different kinds, relays. So a head coach for track can have one kid qualify and they get to go, that kid gets to go to state and the coach goes along. As a football program, in order to get sixty kids on the varsity to go to state, your entire team has to qualify for state, it's a much more difficult thing to do. So, basically, I said, the easiest way to do this is just go with start date to the end of state, because a lot of our coaches go to state every single year, and a lot of our coaches do not. But, the ones that do not, it's incredibly difficult for them to make it to state because they're primarily whole-team sports, and the whole team has to qualify.
And some sports have multiple assistant coaches?
Yes, and some do not. Cross-country, for example, has no assistant coaches, they just have a boys and girls head coach. Yes?
Um, one comment, one question. I, okay, being a soccer mom, I could relate to the numbers for soccer, and I felt that the soccer, the proposed soccer numbers would be in line with what a, like a premier club team coach would be paid. So I just thought, you know, I wanted to have some other area of references with, with the school. Uh, and then my second question is, for example, like, um, you were talking about assistant coaches, like, there's ten assistant football coaches, so I don't know, is that standard for, like, the conference, is that, is, you know, is that a standard number?
It's pretty normal, yep. Football has, because of that, not to minimize the complexity of anybody else's sport, but football is in a very complex game, and it involves having position coaches at every position, that's why we have so many assistants.
And then I was just thinking, because I can relate to the soccer, so, like, your head coach versus your, um, assistant coach, for example, soccer, is the head coach the varsity, 'cause I know in soccer, it's a different person, okay? Head coach for varsity, assistant coach is what would be considered the coach for JV?
Yes. Our head coach is responsible for overseeing the entire program, and then he decides which assistant will be, for example, the head coach for a JV game, but it is still just classified as an assistant.
Now, you had mentioned that you'd looked at the, at the season as defined by the WIAA start date and when the state final was, but again, knowing that the complexity of some of these sports, is there ever an off-season in which the coach is still working, that they're not necessarily getting paid for if we adhere to the WIAA competition schedule?
Your good coaches are working all the time.
So, do you feel that we need to make any adjustments for that, or it's just more reasonable to work on the number of days of season for comparison's sake?
I think that's the reason that I wanted to propose the increase, was to, to accommodate for the fact that there is so much time that is spent out of season, to just say, let's give these guys what other schools around us are paying their coaches, because they do do an incredible amount of work, and our kids benefit tremendously from their experiences in sports, hopefully. And so, yes, the suggested increase is, because I don't think that they were earning what they were earning, so to speak.
I would like to see this compared with, we've got that spreadsheet already at some point before.
Of course. I did bring it, just so you know, I brought it down with me.
I'll be seeing that one, but.
Absolutely.
Some point. Um, is that typically how the other districts do it, that they, everyone gets the same, whether they're new or not, or is that unique to how we would be doing it? How, how do they give them raises in other districts?
It really depends. We have a couple of schools that operate on a years of service. You have a Mesquigo, for example, who operates on a percentage of your salary as an employee, that's how they determine pay for their coaches who work for the school district. So theirs is, I mean, their numbers are all over the place because it doesn't have a standard like we do. If you're the head football coach in Mesquigo, your salary is dependent upon how long you've worked in their district, how much money you make as a teacher, for example. But then, yes, there are no years of service, this is to pay for your head baseball coach, doesn't matter, they get four thousand dollars. And, so, there isn't a good, I didn't have a good reference to say, this is the best way to do it. I decided what worked best for me as an athletic director, and what worked well for Lori in human resources, trying to keep track of this constant changing of years of service and monitoring that. Coaches, especially in the assistant coach area, the turnover is tremendous, so you're constantly making adjustments and keeping track of years of service, and it's, it's a pain. And in addition to that, it's like I said, I hire, and I believe we hire in everything that we do, we hire people who are highly qualified when they start, and just because they've been here for four years doesn't mean that they're now, and they should make more money because they're somehow better than they were the first two or three years as a coach. A lot of our people come in with experience, and you start them off at zero, and they might have five, six years of experience somewhere else. So to me, it makes sense to pay those folks what you pay a head coach, because they're highly qualified when they get here. Our current system says you're not highly qualified until you've been here for four years, and I don't necessarily support that logic, that's why I went with that, you know?
So I brought up the question about, um, middle school or elementary coaches or advisors?
Yep.
And none of them, none of the principals responded or have those?
I don't think it, I don't think there was anything that applied to the elementaries.
Okay.
And no, I did not get anything from the middle school.
Okay. But you do have a, you have athletic program there?
There's coaches, there's advisors, there's now.
Athletic director?
Yep.
And then, and there are, um, clubs, or?
Yes, there are. Should they be included in this? I think that they should be included in this.
Mm-hmm.
Could you apply the same formula?
Most likely.
I think so, I think so, and if the information came, and I'd be happy to sit down with the principal and work through the numbers and how I did things. The only thing that I wouldn't have at the middle school level is I would not have comparable salaries to their coaches from other school districts. My comparable salaries are high school only, but I think that would be a pretty easy problem to work around.
It seems that their seasons are quite short, compact, though, looking at that.
Yeah, it's much, it's much different, yeah, there's no scouting involved, you know, our head coaches scout other teams and break down film, so it is different, and they, they are compensated less than what our guys are over here. Yep. And I think that that's normal, and I think that that would remain the same, I certainly wouldn't propose that their basketball coach should make the same as our basketball coach, for example.
Any comments or questions? Um, what percentage, um, are full-time teachers within this year that our coaches are, like, roughly?
Sadly, it's about fifteen percent. We've been working on that. It is one of, it was one of my goals when I came here, to improve that number, and we did improve slightly. It was only ten percent of our staff. It's not a big jump, but I, a lot of head coaching positions don't always come open.
You know, they should, you know.
It's gotta be a highly qualified candidate, and you know, with the girl softball program, when the head coaching position opened up for girl softball, I didn't have an internal candidate that even applied for it. And we did recruit some people from within the district, and understandably, you know, some, some of the coaches that would have been interested, they're coaching their own kids, and so, it doesn't work sometimes, but, but it's a low number. Mesquigo, for example, has sixty percent of their coaching staff that are internal. And I think it's important, it's a great way to keep tabs on your kids academically, socially.
You're gonna talk about club advisors?
Yep, club advisors, um, this really came about because we had coaches, and I use, I think the biggest example is powerlifting, um, the amount of time that is invested in that club, and those, those advisors are paid zero dollars for that work. I don't know when the policy, if it is even a policy, but I think it, somebody, somewhere along the way had felt that we should put a moratorium on new clubs and compensating those folks. I think I remembered the rationale for doing it, and I'm not saying whether I agree or disagree, but I do recall that that decision was made. Well, now we do have some firmly established clubs that run year in and year out, they're successful, they have a lot of kids in attendance, and I just felt that we needed to put a system in place where we paid those folks for their, for their service, and then address the issue of how are we gonna go forward when we get new clubs? So I sent out, let me just tell you how I got these numbers, and the staff had no idea that I was, there was no mention of a salary increase at all to any of them, and I did that purposefully so I didn't get anybody jacking up the number of hours that they claimed that they worked, thinking that they're gonna get this huge payday at the end of the year. I just asked for, I sent out a, a spreadsheet on Google and asked people to just tell me how many hours they are committing to their club each year and the number of students that are involved. I got that information back, put it into four categories that you see here, zero to one hundred hours, hundred and one to two hundred, two hundred and one to three hundred, and then three hundred plus hours dedicated to that club. And so, from there, we gave each one of those categories a salary. So if you're, and when I say, there was nobody that submitted anything that was like twenty hours for their club, so zero to a hundred, you know, these are big ranges, um, but people really fall pretty close to the even number, the one hundred, two hundred, three hundred. Um, so we went five hundred, a thousand, two thousand, three thousand for those people. And I broke it down basically hourly, I took what people were making right now as advisors, and came up with an hourly number, and used that to say, okay, let's use that same dollar amount against the hours that these people are saying that they're working, and that's where the three tiers came from. And I think that you, powerlifting, for example, they are three hundred hours, they put in about three hundred hours. I was surprised at that amount of time, so I asked them to break it down for me, um, and the investment of time is, it's more than three hundred hours, quite frankly, it's not unusual when they go to an invite, that they're there, it's a fourteen-hour day, that they're there with the kids, and they go to three of those, and then they go to states, and then they go to Nationals, and, I mean, it's, they're here on the weekends, they invest a ton of time in the program. And so, if you pay them three thousand dollars total, so Mr. Schubert and Mr. Lugo are our advisors, they would each receive fifteen hundred. But if you take that, it's ten bucks an hour, and that's not a ton of money that they're getting to do that work, but ten dollars an hour compared to zero is a pretty significant increase, in my opinion, so I think that they're gonna be more than happy if you approved it. So, that's where we're at. Oh, and then there is some criteria for new clubs. Um, all new clubs for their first year will begin in, as, on a voluntary basis, uh, for their advisor, and then we will discuss their compensation after that, and it's, basically, we talked about having a minimum number of students of ten, you gotta have ten kids to run that club. Right now, if you have ten, if we say you need ten kids to run a club, we give you nothing for that. If you are an advisor and you're willing to invest your time, now we're gonna say if you get your ten kids, well, minimally, we're gonna pay you five hundred bucks. I think that's a nice incentive for people to get out there and start recruiting more kids to sign up for their clubs. So, but there is a little bit of a stipulation, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna have a club sign up that's, you know, watch the wall and the paint dry club, and, you know, if he wants to, that's not important to us, so. They gotta have some type of investment in the program and a commitment from kids before we say, okay, this is something we wanna go forward with.
In current clubs, we need to verify that there's at least ten, we're still verifying that there's like ten students that are.
Yeah, we have clubs, and I did go through, and I looked at all of our existing, now, something that you'll notice on this sheet, there are ones that I left the same, that they're currently earning a certain amount, and I left them the same, and the reason that I left them the same is because they would've gone down, and I didn't wanna do that to somebody who has worked with the club for a number of years, and they're earning, say, seven hundred dollars for that work, but because of the tiers now, they would drop down to five hundred dollars. So I left them, I left the existing people where they, where they are, instead of reducing their salary.
What is the outdoor open, or the club outdoor advisor open?
The outdoor club, um, started up last year, uh, great fun, it was an awesome club, the guy that I had running it just couldn't do it for, for nothing. So halfway through the year this year, he said, I'm, I'm sorry, I just can't commit the time, and for nothing.
What is the involvement?
That?
What is the outdoor club involved?
Oh, well, they, um, basically, it's about hunting, fishing, they did some taxidermy in there, it was really, really cool, um, ice fishing, making lures, uh, we did archery, and the kids loved it, but I haven't been able, I wasn't able to continue running it.
How many kids participated in?
The first year, the first year, uh, when we started, we started with taxidermy in the fall, because that's deer hunting season, and we had six kids, um, and four of them actually shot a deer during deer season and brought it back, and then they mounted that, and it was, and then for ice fishing, we had more, we had, uh, twelve or fifteen kids that did the ice fishing, the archery was the most popular, when we went over to Whitnell Park, and the kids got to shoot at targets, we probably had twenty kids doing that.
And this model, too, could be expanded to the middle of the elementary school, perhaps?
It should be, yes.
No, this is done in finance.
Hopefully, we can do this, that we have it all.
Any other comments or questions?
I just wanna thank you for the fairness, um, continuing all your research, and, and I was spending, thinking through fairness and.
That's a testament to Mr. Brzowski, who would always tell me to be attentive to my details, and so.
This would be effective thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Yes.
Any other questions? Step up to the microphone?
Am I done?
Probably not.
Oh, oh, I didn't know if you were something new, Mr. Ellerson.
No, just to, uh, kinda pitch out what Mr. Ellerson said, um, I am in the powerlifting club, and the amount of time that those two, Mr. Schubert and Mr. Lugo, put in is unprecedented. Mr. Lugo, put in is unprecedented. Look at the other teams in the conference and the state, they're in the weight room for about 3 to about 7:30. Well, it's nice, so, not only taking away from their time, but also from their families and stuff.
And I think they've been running for eight years.
Eight years and five stage championships.
Obviously, a dollar of compensation for that time, and I just think it's appropriate that we take a look at that.
And the amount of success and just will that they've given a lot of kids and confidence that they've given a lot of kids is $10.
And if they weren't successful, I wouldn't even be talking. I'm just kidding.
Well, yeah.
Thank you for that, so that we could move right into the next topic. I don't know if you saw the agenda, but that was excellent, that you gave us that segue. The segue is comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration, so that was very timely, so.
All right. Let us help.
So if you have something you'd like the board to consider, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Instead of giving you my address, I'm, we're told to just bring along the business cards.
Okay.
Please leave one in.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Johnston, and I'm the parent of a child who attends Edgerton Elementary School. Like you, I'm an advocate for the kids, and I come to this position of advocacy from two different perspectives. First off, in 1975, I was trapped between two cars as a pedestrian, and I've had my leg rebuilt over the course of the last 38 years. I've had two, I've got two more surgeries to go. But I'm here on behalf of my son, who, as I said, is a student at Edgerton Elementary School, is diagnosed on the autism spectrum. And I'm here to advocate for him as well as for the other special needs children that are enrolled in the district. Just as I relied on the expertise of my doctors, my family, and my friends to learn how to walk again, my son relies on you to help him through his walk through his life. And I think it's really important. At present, unfortunately, the district doesn't have a full-time specialist who can provide the needed support for him and for his peers. Also, the district has placed these four kids that we know of in off-campus programs at considerable expense. It's in my opinion, anyway, that by hiring a full-time intervention specialist, the district will take a much-needed step to target the special needs population and better serve children with disabilities to the maximum extent possible within the district. So I urge you to please approve that budget that's gonna be coming up in the next meeting, I guess, that includes dollars to pay for an intervention specialist as part of that proposed 2013, 2014 staffing plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Anybody else would like to step up? If you do, please state your name. If not, the committee, the whole meeting, we'll have a separate meeting, but because there was only one meeting in May, we've combined them, so I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Do I have a second? You'll get your chance. So we have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. It is roughly 20. Why don't we get back here in like seven minutes, at quarter two, and we'll start the regular school board business meeting. I suppose I might have to use this. To order, verify meeting notice, and adopt the agenda. And we'll pipe the rest of this meeting into the men's room. However, since I called a meeting to order, I also have the ability to juxtapose the position one item for the sake of our student senate representative who has to study for exams. And since students come first, we're gonna turn it over to her and let her give her a report, and then we'll get back on the regular agenda, so.
My name is Elson Lumqueal. I am a junior here at Whitelands. So currently, what's going on in the school is regarding the recent tragedy, the loss of Brittany, we have an action plan that the senate has set up for what we have to do in cases such as this. First, we, tomorrow, we will be having a class, a overall senate meeting, where during the meeting, we will be putting together ribbons, which will be sold at lunches for donations. So we'll be doing that this week. We also have to get a card for the family, which we'll be sending to them. And the arts department, which Brittany was very much involved in, will be making a larger card for her, which students will be able to sign at lunches. And also in the guidelines, protocol states that three weeks to a month after the incident, we will, we have to get a plaque for her for the wall, and we also have to get a plant, a tree planted. But since the year is almost ending, we, we decided that we wanna kind of rush that process and try and get it done before the end of the school year for a slight sense of closure, almost, and don't have it lingering during the summer. So, yeah, just, just kind of a sense of senate, when these things happen, tries to unite the school and kind of bring together power towards this cause and just trying to help in any way we can. So we're gonna do that this week and in the weeks coming, and hopefully we'll be able to help a lot, so, that. And then, on a happier note, we had elections for next year's senate about two weeks ago. We elected a new executive board, which I am now currently on as the events coordinator. We also elected new class officers. We brought in new representatives to each grade, and it looks like a very promising year, so I'm excited about that. Also, two weeks ago, we attended WASD, which is Wisconsin Association of Student Council's State Conference, where all the schools involved with WASD get together for a weekend. We go up to Green Bay on a Saturday, no, on a Sunday, just kidding. And we participate in events and sectionals that challenge what we know and help us become better leaders. We also participate in competitions to kind of project what we as a senate do, and it's really a great weekend, and we were very successful in all the projects that we participated in, getting many gold medals, so that was exciting. Oh, we're also starting to become, look into the process of homecoming next year, so that'll be exciting, so I think that's about it.
Well, that's funny. Sounds like to me your place is very full, so. And on behalf of the school board, thank you for being so proactive and helping out Brittany and her family. I really just, you know, it was a testament to the streets of San Diego. Thank you for your leadership role in the student senate, and I'm glad to hear that you're gonna be around next year, so we'll make sure that you get on the agenda a little bit earlier, so we don't cut into your stuff. But any other comments or questions? Great report, thank you very much.
I'm gonna say, I'm glad they had the opportunity to go to the conference to share with other, the other schools, the most, most of the executive board, were they most of them able to attend, or was there another?
There was a lot of issues this year because.
There's AP psych testing that Monday.
And chemistry the morning of, so we actually bust down, we left early on Monday morning so we could get back for AP psych, but a lot of people started to not attend this year because they want, they don't wanna be up late because the activities on Monday night tend to run a little late, so people wanted to get more studying, and so we didn't have as much of a group of like to this year, but it was still successful and hopefully make sure we don't figure this out.
I may should probably let the conference, you know, kind of know, because those dates are usually set, and there's probably other schools and other things.
A lot of people were very frustrated, and I know our president, there's a president elected to the whole WASD program for high schools, and he actually had to leave early that night because he had anything in the morning, which I know he was gonna set up for last year, so. But hopefully next year is better. We were initially told that it was gonna be, it was prom, and then the day after it was gonna be state, so that was a big concern, but then we found out that was in the middle of the conference, so, but in the same part of it, it was, yeah, so it was.
Anybody else? I'm afraid it goes funny anytime you want. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Item 2A, approval of administrator resignation. 2B, approval of resolution participation in the forward-thinking community outreach. 2C, approval of the April 29th school meeting, school board meeting minutes. 2D, approval of May vouchers and vouchers payable. And 2E, approval of final layoff notices. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda? 2A, thank you.
2E.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items 2B, C, and D.
Salute.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, 2A, approval of administrator resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison, for your time in the school district. Appreciate it.
I think that echoed in a lot of people up here, and I do thank for everything you've done. Not only this go-around, but your first go-around, too. You know, and you know, three times a charm sometimes.
So did you have these three knuckleheads, eighth graders?
You see? Knuckleheads.
Yeah, I had them for Saturday.
Don't put knuckleheads in the mix.
Yeah.
Never, they never missed a school, they're gonna follow whatever it is. You still leave, you know. And this is Mark, and I have a lot of them down.
I've been telling you for four years, the rest.
Before the pizza from last year.
Really? You like a little bit of that stuff?
We'll have to take that offline.
Thank you.
Thank you again. All right, and item 2E, approval of final layoff.
I just wanted to comment that it's never easy to make, you know, make changes, but obviously, sometimes within the curriculum, we do have to make adjustments based on what the current needs and request of the students are.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve 2A and 2E?
Supposed to approve.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving 2A and E, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved. Okay, item 3A, discuss and take possible action on the proposed. Okay, item 3A, discuss and take possible action on the proposed 2013-14 staffing plan. I think Lowell and Joel's absence, you were gonna pick this up, was that right?
Yeah. Joel had a loss in the family and was unable to, I mean, he just found out about it this early this afternoon, I believe, and stepped back in and said it was going forward for him to take care of the family. So with that, I wanna make sure I don't forget some of the more important topics. And the first one, I think, was brought up by Mr. Johnson. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna switch it up a little bit and jump under the special ed portion of the staffing. And this is a new position that we are, want the board to consider. And when Dennis sent the email to Joel and copied me on it and said the reason, he gave the reasons for the position, it was pretty evident, just walking through Edgerton Elementary, the overwhelming number of students with special needs. And when I learned that, you know, we have, as the gentleman had stated, about four kids. It depends on when, but four in and out, in outside placements, outside our district, because they can better suit their needs, those cost us anywhere between forty and sixty thousand dollars. So the thought is, you know, we should be able to bring a couple of those kids back with this position and that would pay for that position. And if you want more of a description, that would be Dennis's forte. So he'd be the person.
Do you want him to explain it a little bit more?
Please.
Please.
Can I take it that this is the handout that he got?
Yes, yes. And part of the rationale for that was after ten months in the, in the district, it really became pretty clear to me, and you backhand Rand's comment about change, that we really, with the numbers we have, could no longer do the put the fires out model. And probably ten years ago, that might have worked, to have a behavioral specialist one day a week in a district. And I was sharing some data in terms of our numbers with autism for a district this size are very skewed to the high level. Using the nine in a thousand, which is kind of typical across Wisconsin, we should have twenty-two students identified as on the autism spectrum. We have forty-two. And of the forty-two, twenty-six of those are shared between our two elementaries. So we have a huge bubble moving through the district. And part of the rationale is exactly as Dr. Holt's just referenced, we really need to be able to do a better job of keeping students in the district. It is the least restrictive environment, that's a legal mandate. And I think with this position, we will really be providing the district in years to come with that capacity. And kind of the initiative that we've got going is just building capacity in general. Building capacity around autism, using a CISA consultant, having a district-wide model. So all of our staff members will be using the same language. It's called the SERCS model. We're gonna be starting that in the, in the fall. It's actually a group of twenty staff members and very excited with that response, who are giving up a week of their summer to get training at the SERCS Academy. So we'll have a team of five from each of our buildings as kind of a core team. And then the CISA consult will come in and roll out that model. So this position, in conjunction with that model, I think will be very effective. And while the focus might be on autism the first year, I think we're really looking at it, and I got input from parents, I got input from our principals, we're really looking at it as part of a tier-two intervention under response to intervention. Because this person can also provide staff in service for our paraprofessional group, which has been largely ignored in terms of training. Staff in service for regular ed teachers, classroom management, strategies and techniques, how to do a good functional behavioral assessment, how to develop a good behavioral intervention plan. The biggest problem we have now with a one-day-a-month consultant is that she can come in, maybe identify an issue, and maybe even identify an intervention, but there's no follow-up until she's back in the district for the next month. Well, you can all imagine, with a month of time passing, it's pretty difficult for her to follow up, was it effective, wasn't it effective? Even the opportunity to model some of these interventions. So I think this would be a really dynamic combination, as I mentioned, in addition with rolling out the SERCS model, to be able to have this position in place, again, with the intent of keeping as many students in district as we possibly can. And I think also helping with the transition between elementary and middle and middle and high school. Having a district-wide position can really help facilitate those behavioral plans that follow students from one level to the next.
So we currently have one person that comes in one day a month for the whole district?
Yes.
And basically can't accomplish anything?
That, not really, not really. And as I said, when, when the numbers were much smaller, maybe even ten years ago, although they've, you know, been moving up exponentially, it was possible. Maybe, maybe not even with one day a month, but if you had a couple of days a month, it was possible to kind of limp along. But with the numbers that we're dealing with, we just, I mean, if we're gonna position ourselves to keep as many students being served in the district as we can, we need to have something that's a little more consistent.
And this person would oversee the whole district?
This person would be a district-wide position, exactly. And as I said, I think with the first year, with the forty-two students on the spectrum and rolling out the SERCS model, the first year, the focus would probably be on the autism population. That doesn't preclude the person from, again, assisting with staff development, assisting with behavioral interventions for non-special ed students. I mean, I really don't want it to be viewed as special ed only, because it's not, particularly the way principals envisioned it.
And there's plenty of candidates out there?
Well, I don't know about plenty of candidates, but UWM has a very strong program and they do have students coming out with a master's level education in applied behavioral analysis. We also added the board certified specialists. Because, after talking with the principals, looking at a person who's got a broader base of behavioral interventions, having that board certification would allow that person to also have a broader array of interventions to offer and train our staff on beyond autism and beyond special ed. And that's basically a possibility to take after the graduate.
I have a couple of questions. Will this person also, as part of their duties, have they noticed that extension that provides parent training as well? So will they also be working in conjunction with the school social worker to find resources from other services if the families might need them?
That would definitely be one component. There's also, in year two of the SERCS model, a very specific parent training component that this person could also contribute to in terms of actually doing some in-home training, actually having parents take video of their children, students at home, analyzing that, helping them with behavioral strategies. So, yeah, again, I think social worker would probably be more the non-special ed population. Using SERCS model in year two with that parent training component, this person would also move that along.
And then how much student contact is anticipated? Or is that something that, on the higher end, as we study the autism issue and the students' needs around that, that it would slowly roll back to less student contact?
Yes, and the short answer to that is yes. Even with the SERCS model, that's basically a three-year program. And the idea there is, after the third year, there's really no need to have a consultant come in. Year two of that, in addition to the parent component, there's actually training that goes on for non-special ed staff. So again, the idea is build the capacity, implement the model, and then you don't need the consultant anymore. But that would be the nice part of having this position in tandem with that, because this person could also keep that SERCS model going, but it would be less focused on autism than it was probably gonna be this first year.
Okay, I guess one of, one of my basic concerns over creating a position is where we do have a large need, I would be in favor of someone who has as much contact with staff and student as possible.
In terms of promoting the contact with staff and students?
Right, and just having more, more contact to help, to help the students themselves and getting as much support as we could. I just, I would hate to see having someone that's qualified, being able to offer services, help more children in our district, and then have that particular person almost roll back into more of an administrative position?
Oh, no.
Instead of a parent contact, a community contact, a student contact position.
Well, at least my vision would not be to ever really have it moved into an administrative position. I think the only thing that would change from year one to year two would be maybe that autism focus would be more important in year one in particular, as we're getting the SERCS model implemented. But I would really envision years two and three, that actually there would be more of the regular staff development in terms of behavioral strategies, non-special ed behavioral plans, staff in service for our paraprofessional group. And actually, that came up when I met with the principals. And one of our thoughts would be, we would have some of those activities outside of special ed built into kind of a calendar before the school year even starts and then work some of the other duties around the SERCS model.
And also focus on early identification and intervention as well?
Absolutely. This would be a, really a K-12 model.
Other questions? You ready?
Just wanna support this position. Our kids with special needs really deserve more, really. They need more support. So I am disappointed to be able to send them out and I'm glad we're gonna start to bring kids back and provide more support. I think we often have too low of expectations also for kids with disabilities. They can do an awful lot. So you look at the data and break down subgroups of kids, and I don't know about Whitmore, but you have a high population. And often, those are the lowest of the two. So my concern with this position is it looks too broad. I'd like it to be more narrowed down for kids, providing that support with kids with disabilities. But, you know, taking this step is a good step. And maybe we can continue to look at, once we see the impact of this position, which was my question, I was getting that. Where would you see the impact? Would we expect learning to go up for kids with this feeling? Where would we see, is it also behavioral, what are the?
I think it would be both of those, to be honest. And part of the whole response to intervention, usually when they have that response intervention triangle, there's a line down the middle, one side is academic, the other side is behavioral, because those two go very close to hand in hand. I'm not sure the babies can tell you with the PDIS data, there's definitely data suggests fewer office referrals means more time in class with instruction and we do see a positive correlation to academic achievement. So I would anticipate that, and Common Core is gonna drive some of this too. With our staff having to do IED goals related to Common Core, there's going to be more emphasis on higher standards for our students with disabilities. And really, once behavior is under control, so much of this, from what I'm seeing, is environmental and how to manipulate the environment to allow the student to be successful. And once staff have a good handle on that, you know, that doesn't have to be redone over and over. Some of the specific intervention techniques really are kind of related to what's the need of that specific team. So I think, you know, we would be tracking office referrals. We'd be tracking the number of behavioral plans that would be developed. The advantage of having a full-time person is they would also be doing the follow-up in terms of the data, what does the data look like? What is the data telling us about an intervention? If it's not working, then we need to try something else. Whereas now, I'm kind of getting the feeling that staff will try something, maybe not even to the length of time they need to be trying it, and either just drop it or move on to something else without a clear idea of why they're moving on to something else. So I think we could track the behavioral, we're not a good idea.
Are we clear about which of these behaviors are manifestation of the disability versus a student acting up? I mean, are we targeting, are we targeting both groups or?
We are targeting both groups. The advantage of having somebody with this kind of background is they are skilled at functional behavioral analysis. And the autism experts will all tell you, as well as good behavioral expert, behavior communicates. And that's a huge paradigm shift for some staff members to look at any kind of behavior as communication. So once you have that paradigm shift, having the behavioral specialist help identify what is the function of behavior and then the plan is developed around how can we remove that and move it to a different function, whether it's a spiritual or a sort of, whatever my theory.
You, you work with this person?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, yes.
I would get to know this person very well.
And, and you are looking at this as a, as a district-wide, any student, not necessarily those specifically identified with an IED?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because that's, that's another very quiet need in our district is that there are some students that, that demonstrate high cognitive ability. Their test scores prove it, but they need emotional and behavioral support as well. But they're not drawing the same attention because the academics are so sour. But there's, there's another quiet need in our district, if this looks like this could go as well.
I don't know if I'm sure of it, but from the time I started in this field, I mean, the whole field of behavior has become much more scientifically based, obviously. So to have the skills to know the type of data to collect, to show staff how to collect data that's specific to what you're looking for and then incorporate that data into a behavioral plan and monitor the success of the plan, it's become a pretty sophisticated business.
Do you have any idea of salary range? Because again, this hasn't been anything that's been in front of the finance committee.
When I went online, it said the average in the Milwaukee area was forty-nine thousand.
And that's salary only, that benefit included?
Um, I don't have that heavy because just salary. If you're ballpark, it'd be about a seventy-five thousand dollar package.
But at the beginning, you had mentioned that you thought possibly some of the students that were now transferring funds to go off-site need.
I'm thinking of one in particular, absolutely. Definitely want them back.
So that would be dollars if you would normally go out, but it also, yeah, also else.
And how much of that is subsidized by other means, other than just our operating?
Hundred dollars?
Oh, what's the percentage for?
Oh, yeah, special ed reimbursement percentage. About, about twenty-six, twenty-seven.
It doesn't come anywhere near the general fund. We have a big transfer amount that goes in there. And we're not just focusing on special ed here. It just happens that one of the reasons we brought Dennis in was to look at the whole program. Even if this meant adding a position to our overall count, which I don't think in the long run is well because we're shifting, you know, with the layoffs that you saw, it's gonna... Joel did stop in temporarily. His goal is basically will end up being pretty much what we had last year, the total number, yeah, fees. But, or this current revenue. But this is of enough importance and it, in the long run, should, well, number one, the most important thing, we always have to remember, it's in the best interest of our kids. Number two, because it's in the best interest of our kids, we shouldn't have to send them off to outside residential or outside placements, which are extremely expensive, including the transportation. It takes the kids away from home, school, least restrictive environment, and it's just not right. And so we moved it from back burner to the front burner when we started looking at the data, it was like overwhelming.
It's, I'm hearing the report, is this, can I find it?
It's just, we...
It's not, no, but it's not in the numbers yet?
It's not in the numbers, in the preliminary staffing needs?
No, because Joel didn't add that into the special ed. He didn't?
But I'll, I'll see.
He had it, he had one from twenty-eights, oh, that's, yeah, that's right. It's not, I'll check. So this is, this is one, everything you see in here now has pretty much been, a couple of weeks ago, you saw it and he sent it out to you ahead of time. So I was pretty comfortable in telling him, no, it's okay, it's taken. So I was pretty comfortable in telling him, no, it's okay to take away. But most of this, if not all of it, you've seen over the past, well, since the last board meeting and the weeks between. This, I wanted to put an emphasis on because this is one of the newer items that we felt... I always have a guilt complex if I spring something on the board and ask you to make a decision. Believe me, I do, because I know how upsetting it can be, and I don't want to, yes, no surprises. I don't want to upset my board. But...
Sure.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
But I felt the importance was high enough that it was worth throwing out in front of you, and we're totally understanding if you need to think about it for, you know, an extra two weeks or something, that's understandable. But if you're comfortable, that's why I wanted to point it out and highlight it.
Well, my thing is, is you say that it's not going to cost us any more money.
In the long run, because of kids that we have in the pipeline that are ready to move out, kids that we already have out, it's something we have to do to stop it.
And as with the increases that we just talked about for the coaches and club specialists now, although, that's on the geniturode vote on that, but that, as is this, has not come through the finance.
That's not in the budget, then, it hasn't gone through the finance. That isn't in the finance. We've talked about staffing with finance, and so this is the exception to the one position that didn't go through finance. And in the long run, the reason it's still called preliminary is before we actually hire anybody, the board has to approve the hire, because the board hires and fires. So, and that's going to be driven by, even though these are numbers in the end of May, when we come to July or August, the numbers might have dropped down in one area and gone up in another. And we do a lot of last-minute shifting to try to keep it status quo.
And there's a increase in special ed teacher at the high school from last year to, from the current year to next year, I see?
I believe so.
Yes. That's a full-time STE?
Doesn't that follow the student population?
I see, did it change at the middle school maybe?
Right. They come up from the middle school, and staffing follows.
One of the, I'm not complaining about it, because it's the right thing to do, but when a student has an IEP, you know, we really need to follow through on it always. We pay a lot more than we would have paid if we would have just taken care of the needs in the first place.
And where is this bubble that you speak of?
The bubble in terms of children on the autism spectrum is at the elementary. As I said, we've got forty-two district-wide, but twenty-six currently are shared between Hills Corners and Edgerton. So that K-5 population is going to be moving to middle school and high school. And actually, that's another piece of this, because regular ed, since we work off of inclusion, regular ed, staff are going to start to have to learn a little more about how to work with kids on the spectrum too, because, you know, some of them, some of them are pretty high function, so they're going to be probably included for the most part. So it's really part of that whole building capacity piece that we're trying to do with the SERC model. This would be a conjunction of that.
I guess my comment on this is, when it comes to special ed, this is obviously not my area of expertise, it's your area of expertise, and I have to trust that what you're, you know, bringing to us is based on what your knowledge and what you see happening in the district. I can bring some non-scientific, just conversations with parent teachers that leaves me in my heart to believe that there is more of a need for this within schools. But when it comes to the actual technical support data, I'm, you know, relying on your expertise that you bring to us that we need to...
Other questions or comments?
We're not voting on this, I just...
Discuss and take possible action on the proposal instead. And I have some process questions.
Sure.
Process question is, in the proposed staffing plan, you're proposing we include the new behavioral intervention support specialist. Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah.
But yet, this is not have gone to either finance or personnel?
Correct.
And what I heard you say, Lowell, was that you feel it'll be close to a one-to-one trade-off between what we spend outsourcing this right now versus adding a full-time equivalent in this position? Is that right?
Not just the outsourcing, because that's the one-day-a-month person. And that's only seventy-five hundred or something like that. But it's the money we're spending to send them to Fairview.
Fairview South.
And that'll range anywhere from forty-five to sixty thousand dollars per student, depending on the services they receive. So that's where, and there's kids that are on the bubble now to go in there as well because we don't have the ability to provide them the service.
So that function will go away with this position?
Not totally eliminated, because there are still going to be kids that will need services that there's no way we could provide them in this district.
So it's not a one-to-one trade-off?
No. If you're looking at total cost analysis, this will end up saving the district money over the twelve to twenty-four months coming up. It'll more than break even, it'll prevent more of those fifty thousand dollar students going out, keep them here in their home district, and it gives our, and like he said, well, I don't know if he said it, but one person isn't going to be able to touch each one of those forty-two and be the sole person. What they have to do is talk to this teacher here who has, you know, two of them, and help this teacher be more successful in dealing with those. And so that's the power of a position, because he's right, when you do the mainstreaming, sometimes a regular ed teacher doesn't understand the behavior that's associated with the kids trying to communicate.
And this position will report to you direct?
Yes.
Do you need a motion? No, your answer. Do you need a motion to approve? I need to approve the staffing plan.
We have a motion to approve and take action on the proposed two thousand thirteen, fourteen staffing plan, including the behavioral intervention specialist position. That's the motion. Do we have a second? Well, here's a second.
A second?
Other discussion?
Yes, but it clearly states in here that this is a proposed, right? So...
Correct, it's preliminary.
Preliminary. Meaning, depending on the numbers of students come in, go at the last second, or as we move forward from this day forward, as is the case every year, things could change minimally.
Correct. And like last year, you added a section at Edgerton, I believe, at the, like in August. And that was brought to the board to get approval before we did it, because, again, it has to come straight to the board.
And our sections are about as full as we want to make them right now.
That's correct.
Well, I'm all for this position. That's what I got to say.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? Okay. On favor of the motion, which is the proposed thirteen, fourteen staffing plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed. And let me just state why I'm not opposed to the position. I think it's totally needed. Like, we have a process issue here, it should go to personnel and finance for input. We continue to say that, and we have a process in place, and we have those committees in place for a purpose. And I think we're bypassing that. And that's why I have a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item three, B, discuss and take possible action on nature pod proposal. Do we have two people coming up for that?
We're going to stand here, sweep again. I trust, you know, you've all read your packet and looked at the balance sheet. I guess, I mean, this has been to the board a few times already for discussion. Are there any questions that we can answer?
Let me add into that a little bit. The board made a motion for them to go ahead and plan the layout part of it. And so now what they're doing is bringing the completed, if we did the whole project, this is what it would look like, this is what it would cost. So that's what they were charged with. Now, and I think I included that in a memo to the board, our K-12 science coordinator, one of those positions we approved last board meeting, Laura Silette said there are a lot of things that we could do with that nature pod by trying to designate it as a school forest and taking advantage of that label to clean out what, basically what these gentlemen need to do, which is get rid of invasive species, and so they can do clean plantings and have more variety for our kids to work with and look at. So, and then I think I gave you my thoughts on it. You have the approximate cost for a complete course, and currently, no funding is tied to the proposal. So I'm thinking we could maybe phase in parts as we work to make the science curriculum improvement and enhancements. So my personal recommendation, which I've shared with these gentlemen, is that we look at getting the under, brushing it out first. And that's what we'll commit to now, that will give the high school kids some time to, if this is truly something that they want in their community, to maybe do some fundraising efforts as a group to fund one or two of the holes that we could put in place that will complement what we're doing with our science curriculum and H5 slash focus school forest. How do I do?
This sounds good. If we were to tie a dollar mount to just clearing of, you know, of the large portion of the honey stuff that we're putting there, that would be the first clearing number on top of all five. So we'd be, we would be clearing and cutting along the designated path for future of the disc golf course, which encompasses the entire nature pod, so we'd be going around and getting a lot of that invasive species. Right, and what we'd be looking for is, if that's what you wanted to do, then we would include that in our budget, which you guys would approve in, while our end meeting is an official table. Right, just another piece to this, one of the guys that helped us play Carrington, very connected, actually couldn't be here today because he would be running the physical golf community, said that, you know, if the board does approve the district, you know, for us to do something with it, that he would be on board with his plug, and he was soliciting some donations possibly, helped us also get this done, but he's a member of the board. And then I do have a letter here that, I don't know if you guys received it, but what I have is it's personally signed from Karen Mulligan, the physical education teacher.
My fault, I totally forgot about it, I got that back after the first meeting, it was you guys, and I remembered it from before I came here, so I just sliced on your packet.
To recap, you know, her letter, in a nutshell, basically, the disc golf course is used in the fall and in the spring. They would be using it for PE. Once the course is in, there's minimal equipment requirements, a lot of kids can participate at one time, no traveling to do this kind of experience, and he said it would be a great setting for the adaptive physical education class. So, I'm assuming that adaptive PE would be something to do with that, and just obviously good for the community, so I can give this to, just pass it around.
Yeah, someone to read.
Total copy. Yeah. So, you know, something like this stuff that will be positive, another unique feature to our district, I guess.
Do you take, Dr. Holt, how do you take Mr. Letti's email? For it?
Yeah, actually, I talked with her after it too, actually, I talked with her Saturday at the Booster Club event, and she said she, when she wrote it, she was writing it to be in support, yes, we kept the science department in mind and made sure that we took advantage of the opportunities as a science department that could come about by partnering with us. Because that's sat there for, well, I don't know how many years, because I've only been here three, but nothing's been done with it since the first planting. And now, some of the buckthorn and other invasive species are starting to choke out the stuff that this district spent money on when they received the donation so many years ago. And she's saying that by doing that, it would enhance what they do as a science department. So she saw it as a positive when she was talking to me.
In her email, just a quote, I have it here, "With the introduction of next-generation science standards and their eventual implementation in the near future, the nature pod will become an even more important teaching tool as we develop, that will expose our students to next-of-the-base science." This could include, but is not limited to land use, studies, or invasive species, any forms of...
Yeah, and I read that, and I know what you're saying, and what she's saying. And then I said to myself, well, this needs to stay a nature pod. What are we putting disc golf in there for? Nothing against it. If it's going to be used for, and with new curricula that we have this pod sitting there that you can use it, why do we want people going through their...
Because that traffic will actually keep the invasive species out of there, because people will be walking in there, they'll be actually using it. So having that foot traffic in the nature pod, if you've ever been to Valley View and been down in their woods since the disc golf course was put in there, just the foot traffic alone is enough to help that forest, not being a scientist, but, you know, it just, it keeps everything clean, keeps the weeds down, you know, the disc golfers kind of help maintain it by having them in there.
So it is, anybody can come at any time and play on it to the public?
Right.
So what happens if we have a science class going on and they're flipping the disc around?
We have to post hours.
You would post hours, yeah. Some of the earlier discussions were very much focused on that, and before we would, and we're not to the point where we're going to invite people in or even fill a hole in right now, but those rules would have to be developed, and it's kind of like Laura said, it's got to be a team effort, so that we make sure that the main focus is, you know, the academic part of it, and granted, it is part of the academics, but it was intended mostly for the science part of it. And if we could happen to do both, and our science specialists say yes we can, then I think it would raise the comfort level of everybody involved.
So what, you're asking us just to approve the twenty-two hundred dollars?
Well, I mean, the proposal that's the brain is for the full course installation. Now, I did add a thing in there that says estimated cost per hole. No, I just took the number and divided by nine, so, you know, that's something we could potentially look at doing if we just wanted to put a couple holes in or whatever, but I think it's going to be more advantageous, if we're going to do this, that we put nine in, so at least we could have a full game out there. I know they put in like three holes down at Grant Park, and it's, you know, always going to show up to that, or, you know, so, you know, the holes in front of you is, you know, a piece that Lowell said, you know, we want to get started on this, the maintenance portion of it, you know, this is something that, you know, if approved, I wouldn't be actually starting until probably mid-June when Laura's done, because I need to bring her in to walk the course with the landscaper and contract, that's what we're doing, the work, so that some of the things that she needs to have addressed are addressed along with that. So this isn't just approved, and then, you know, next week, there's somebody out there with a chainsaw. This would be done methodically over the summer.
And the only thing I'm recommending, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Quinn, the only thing I'm recommending is the clearing part... because, um, that will give the kids time to really see if there is a big interest and, and get some fundraising through this organization, and gives time for Matt and our new activities director to flesh out some of the details about when's it open, when's it not open. You know, we've decided we wanna put a, um, for sure, whether we do this or not, we wanna put a remote camera, um, out in that area, and, um, you know, to cut some of the traffic down where kids shouldn't be walking through there and things like that. Um, so, the, and right now, we're just saying, if this is something you would consider moving forward with, our only step this coming year, right now, unless the board jumps in and adds to it, would be to, um, do the clearing, which we wanna do for programs regardless.
And this comes out of your budget?
Um, is this fair later?
Of course.
Well, I have, it's not coming out of science or, I don't think.
It's a maintenance, you know, done, done in the way that Lowell just described it, it would be a considered maintenance.
But that's why I asked the question, but the question I, you answered is if we were to say yes, we're, we're biting off the whole twenty grand?
No, we, you guys could most, make a motion to approve, uh, the clearing of the nine acres of, of the nature pod for buckthorn and honey sub.
Here's what, what I'm struggling with with this, I think it has some, so many positives, but is it a, you know, is it a priority? You know, so if you, I guess if it's a priority to clean this out for the science classes, great, you know, I'd be okay to approve the course cleaning, and then I would throw the responsibility of fundraising for the golf course part back.
Yeah, this was a student-led initiative.
To the student, student initiative.
This wasn't brought to the work by.
You know, that portion of it. But is it a pri, you know, is a priority in your budget to clean up the, the nature site?
If you ask me that right now, I would say no, it is not a priority in our budget. There's, um, is it important to clear out the invasive species in there? Yes, but as our budgets, you know, get tighter, um, you know, we gotta look, you know, at its trade-offs. We're at, we're at a trade-off point in operations where we do one thing, so we go on to something else. So, um, you know, again, it's a student-led initiative, you know, I was really happy to work with Clayton on this. You know, ultimately, it is the board's call.
Well, I guess one of the, back to Bernie's issue, come and debate process, this particular proposal and breakdown of, did not come in front of the finance committee. We did not see this.
Oh, yeah, we, we had this in front of finance. Oh, the final one, no.
We did not see this.
No, it, the, the balance sheet was not cleared for.
So we, you know, this is the first time that there's been a balance sheet and concrete costs assigned and broken out to it. Um, the other issue I have with it is that, as we had had prior conversations, we were hopeful of donations from the community or other suppliers for frisbee golf to try to help finance some of this, but then at looking this, I'm assuming that they're not necessarily stepping up to the plate to clear out buckthorn. They're stepping up to the plate to give us some of the, the hardware for the course itself. So the burden of most of this is still falling on us as a district to tune at twelve grand. However, taking our science department into account, I also was maybe reading a little bit too far in between the lines on that email, uh, but it looked as if, if we were able to designate it as a forest, that perhaps there might be other funding available to us under that title. That might offset some of this larger portion of the expense.
Can you have a disc golf in a forest?
Well, there's really two, you know, there's really two things before you, I mean, one, one thing that you guys are looking at is what are you gonna do with the nature pod? I mean, what is, what is the board calling for the nature pod? Uh, this is, this is definitely that is something that has been, these things have been installed in areas with woods, with problems, you know, where it's helped. Um, it's, it's good to, you know, I could, I could, I could do posts and times for you all to read on it. But ultimately, you know, it looks like by Laura's email, we're gonna have to do something in there in science. Um, this is a, a great starting point for that. You know what it looks like? Yeah, it looks nice. So.
You know, and I, I have to take up my leave comment, I really do, and say that, you know what, I have nothing against frisbee golf, I don't run on places, I, I think it's fine. I think it would be a good addition to, to the community and to our gym classes. But from a budgetary standpoint, where it's coming out of your budget, and we have set clear priorities, that student safety comes first. And, you know, and we gotta look at those things, we have other things in the district that could easily use that type of funding.
Do we have any other comments?
This is Jennifer Buckhorn. To keep it short, I'll just agree with some of the concerns that were voiced. We have a long-range facilities plan, this doesn't appear to be a part of it yet. I agree with your suggestion, I think we should be looking broader at the science side of it rather than just jumping in at the moment. It's a beautiful piece of property, I took a nice long, long walk back here, so thank you for bringing this to our attention, because we do need to do something with it. So, and, and whether or not it will be frisbee golf, I just have a concern moving forward at this time, but at least now we know some things about what it would cost to get frisbee golf in there, but I don't wanna move forward with it at this time. It's just, we gotta think it through a little bit more, and we gotta look at the priorities in the district, we have the safety concerns at the school, and I'm sure you understand that, but you know, what's going on. And that just came up, you know, those things come up, and then you gotta take your resources and look at what's best for kids. We have some kids with disabilities coming through, how are our facilities in terms of disabilities? You know, we have some issues there that we have to, that, that the board became aware of recently again, that we have to take care of, so. This time, I would just assume wait and get, um, part of the facility committee and science committee planning this and creating a vision for that from the board's perspective, or do we want that to go with this beautiful piece of property?
Yeah, it really is a land use stuff.
It can, it can, right, and we don't know that.
Steph, and Stephanie does have a good point that this didn't go to the final, the, the concept's gone there, and we've talked about general class before, but this specifically did not, and, um, having heard the message about process, that might be the, the avenue to pursue.
And I'll just add one thing, money talks. So if you've got community people out there that are really willing to pay for this, that doesn't stop you from still continuing those conversations, 'cause that, that would help, I think, in the future, but I would rather us wait, prioritize it, look at our other facilities, and, and create that vision, collaborative vision around what, you know, have we thought through everything before we move forward, so.
And I just, I just wanna quickly say, because it's really hard for me to say no to something that a student initiated, who has put a lot of legwork into it. But I have to look at the whole picture, but I really, I do really appreciate the work that was into it, and I really like to support our students, so this is a really hard decision for me, so just saying.
Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Yeah, did you, did you, where did you think you were gonna get the mon, where were gonna get the money from? Did you, did you investigate any, any foundations for, did you do any of that?
Source of revenue?
Yes.
I, I worked closely with Mike Harrington, who was the guy that really stepped in with us, the president of that disc golf club, the local disc golf club, and that was our best, that was our best source or, you know, potential source of revenue, and still could be. Um, you know, after, you know, hearing all the comments from the board, I think something could easily take that.
And then I know, I did just kind of a general thing, I know, uh, from a student perspective, NHS would be willing to donate, depending on their, their funds. I know Student Senate has agreed to donate, um, those are two clubs I want around me, because I'm associated with those clubs very, uh, but I have no problem going around to their clubs, their advisors and seeing if I can.
Are we talking a couple twenty-dollar bills or hundreds or thousands?
No, a hundred dollars each. A hundred dollars each, I know Student Senate would probably be up to seven hundred, I think. Um, NHS, I don't know their budget, so I couldn't tell you that.
I mean, I think the students could fundraise the thirty-five hun, you know, over time, the thirty-five hundred dollars to do the course, it's just whether, right now, as a district, the maintenance budget, if the course cleaning to support that is a priority or not.
Well, the other concern is, you're graduating, correct?
I am.
So who, who's gonna take the torch?
Good question.
You know, and I mean, and I'm not sure, I, I know Matt is involved, is he, you know?
Right, I mean, what, what, from my standpoint, we'll, I will take a look at the nature pod if interest continues here, or if, you know, it becomes part of an educational plan or land use. Like I said, it's really a land use question, that's the, or you, the student, you know, brought a unique perspective to that.
There's no way a wheelchair could get back in there right now, so I mean, that's all gotta be thought through. That's all gotta be thought through.
Any other comments, suggestions, questions? If not, anybody wanna make a motion on what was presented for the establishment of a nature pod disc golf?
Is it appropriate to make a motion to table this discussion, or what would, I would second that, what would be the most appropriate?
I, I think, we, it can always come back, if there's no motion at all, then it can always come back, so. I don't hear a motion, so it could come back at a later time. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, do some recruiting if you wanna hand it off to somebody. All right, item three C, discuss and take possible action on the Woodnoe High School secure restable entry. Uh, Matt, this is yours, I believe, also?
Let's move on.
There's plenty of full motion video on that, man. When it's overtime after nine.
Oh, man.
Yep, there you go.
I think it's tired. Just play this. It's tired, right? Because. There, now we, got it, everything?
We got it.
Okay. So, um, I mean, I, I, I thought, I thought, you know, the cover letter that you wrote, um, does a great job of kind of explaining where this thing's at. I don't know if you want me to reiterate that in this, um, what I, what I do have, what is nice about this is that showing a rendering of what we're gonna do, which is, um, basically taking these existing three doors, and they'll all be on, uh, timers, you know, with magnetic strikes, so that they'll be secure during the day, and then for after hours, you can unlock them if needed, or in the morning when the kids are coming in. Um, everyone coming to Woodnoe High School under this current plan would be coming into the entrance the same, but now you're gonna come to a little ticket window here, where we're gonna have actually a little desk and a, and a secretary, um, stationed, and you would take your whatever driver's license, whatever, and, or use the computer, I think they're using right now, to get a visitor's pass. Once you get that visitor's pass, you get two options, you can either get buzzed into the high school office, or you can get buzzed into the school directory. You cannot get into the high school and just walk in anymore, which is, which is the case now. Um, and just to, to speak to the ADA side of that, it'll be the same thing, um, if somebody in a wheelchair was to come up here, you know, they come to the counter, it's, uh, obviously on the ADA height, it's your visitor's pass, and then, you know, we do have a push button and the, and the opener, so that if she can actually operate that door for, um, somebody in a wheelchair. So, um, you know, the, the, obviously with, uh, FCD involved, the plan does need, um, requirements. The other thing we're doing that's nice to the project is we're updating our, uh, there's only three cameras in this, but, um, we're starting to update to the newer technology, the HD cameras, right now we're still running full acts like your KTV TV and some of our cameras, so we, we have some fourteen-year-old technology there, so we're trying to slowly phase in as we, two sections of the building. So we'll have better video quality of people coming in the building, you know, if there's anything, uh, after hours, you know, that happens, we'll have better, you know. So, um, it's really a great design, it's needed, um, just to speak to the budget, um, I, we have not yet done any, um, value analysis within the budget scope, so, um, with approval, you know, we definitely bring in our hardware contractor and make sure that we're reusing as much, as much the door, all this, a hundred percent of the door hardware can be reused, the closers and whatnot, so, um, so we'll bring them in, that, so that, that would typically have some blazing number down, you know, bring in the electrical, make sure that the electrical is secure, you're on the same page, trying to bring those numbers down. So we're basically gonna do the same thing like we do with the stadium. So really, uh, this one oh two, seven forty-one number, I'm, I'm very confident saying that we give that to a seed number. I, I have a, a very good feeling that, um, we can, we can take, I mean, I got fifteen hundred in here for permits. That's worst-case scenario, we feel City Green folks would be very good about weaving comics. But again, in building the budget, I wanted to strike, including, uh, some of the costs in there, so, um, yep, and the security coordination allowance is just, uh, another allowance that I, I thought we needed to carry just to make sure that, um, all the old wiring and local projects in there now, you know, is all piped in correctly, because what we're basically gonna be able to do now is, um, through a computer, you know, lock and unlock these basic doors. We, we already have that capability at Hill's Corner, at the middle school, and we have that capability here to some extent. So bringing this in is, is gonna, it'll be nice. We already have the software, we already have the PC, you know, it's basically now getting it set up to plug in. Which is why, under owner cost, is there, uh, that HP, that, that power re, that switch, that's one of Eric's things that he needs to make all the security or all the technology work for the security system, so.
Are you putting this out the bud, out the bid, or?
Uh, with BJS as the, you know, they're, they're bidding all the, you know, the departments and the sections of the.
BJS was the only general contractor that you use for the bidding process.
Right, BJS put out the glass ablazing, electrical, and security. The se, the security components are listed down underneath estimated owner cost, because that's something that we would purchase the gas, so. And right now, I don't have, there's no need for furnishings or, you know, additional health assistance or, which is out of control.
And the reason it's coming directly here and up through the finance committee is because, wouldn't it normally go through the finance committee for further discussion?
This, this was, uh, well, you wanna?
Sure.
This was something that was talked about at the finance committee.
We actually talked about it at the finance committee and then at the board, when we were talking about priorities, and we said there's three, one is late.
Yeah, I.
The actual proposal has, has not, because, and typically, in the past, once we've been told to go ahead and get the numbers, we don't always go to the finance committee, because we're aware of the fact that we're going out through the numbers, we bring it directly to the board. If you wanted it to go through there, that, that would be fine, but it's something we wanna do through during the summer, and it's up, and we can fund it through forty-one, um, which, Fund Forty-One, where we have money currently available, and then, unlike, you don't have to spend the entire hundred, two thousand, if it comes in at, um, ninety-five or ninety-eight, it's just whatever it ends up being, that's what's covered through Fund Forty-One, um, with, with a not to exceed, like Matt had said. So, it, it's the timing of being able to get to the committees.
Correct, there's only one board meeting in May, there's no finance committee meeting this month.
And that would typically be, um, the last one.
I mean, yeah, I, I can see how that process, but, um, and getting this done ahead of time gives me time to schedule, 'cause I'm gonna be shutting down and securing this front entrance, because while work's being done, obviously, you're gonna have to make sure the buildings stay secure, so this gives us time after the school's out, the kids are out, and we have summer school to work with, um, and I don't know, are we doing more than this yet? Um, it just gives us time to get it done, get everything done.
And time for school start?
Right.
That's guaranteed?
That will get done before school starts, oh, yeah, if we can get it to start now.
And Jack, the current balance in Fund Forty-One is?
Approximately a million and a half dollars.
And it wasn't any restrictions on that, other than it needing to be used for capital projects?
Uh, it can only be used for purchase or improvements of sites or, uh, buildings, you cannot buy furniture and equipment.
It's, it's definitely a needed project, you know, once the, the security landscape of schools. of schools.
Totally agree with that, totally agree with you. Is that bulletproof, bulletproof glass?
It is, uh, like a firelight glass. Now, bulletproof to what caliber? I couldn't tell you, but, um, I, it, we did specify it as firelight glass, which is tempered glass that has a, a special film in between the two pieces that is, uh.
None of our other glasses, interesting.
Yeah, it would be the only, that's the first time we ever used it.
Good point.
Yeah, and, and we don't even have it in here, so.
But don't.
Yeah, that's the last one.
Don't talk, okay, so the other question?
So, go ahead.
One more, if, when you come in, and I'm trying to remember, isn't there a ramp down to another level?
Yeah, this door right here, um, is the idiot ramp down to the elevator that gets you down to the, to the first floor.
So how does that play into the security?
This door here is also electronic controlled by the secretary.
Okay, so you go in, you check in there, and you can come back and get in there?
Correct, well, the secretary can actually hit a button and unlock this door for the individual in a wheelchair, and then they would have the same access as this, the door would still open.
And you're just repositioning the secretary?
Yeah, well, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna keep the big table there, where, uh, this craft is now, and we're gonna create a workstation where those students sit, and then, I would have to leave this one if she wants, and she's not here right now, is actually move the student helpers that we have into the space that the athletic director's secretary is in. So we're just gonna kind of do a little, uh, physical chairs in the office. But the, the part that you're not seeing here in this rendering is just, uh, some case work from the actuals already there, you know, another board space, another, uh, also, uh, that it's here.
It controls their entrance into the building in a different way though, totally, because of the way we have it now, they can push the button and they can go anywhere, but this way, even when they push the button, there's.
The door, the button won't, because they will have to get access from this secretary. The secretary will have to release the lock before that push button will be unlocked.
Basically just adds time.
So you get to the secretary, right.
It just adds time, I mean, that's all it does, but that's.
Correct, exactly, that's exactly what this design does, it buys us time in case you have, you know, some kind of active, sometimes, it, it will buy us time.
We need a motion?
And VJS, you chose, that, you know, you feel confident that the, that the.
Well, I'll tell you, after, after doing that six half million dollar project and coming in, um, with the budget that we came in, and you could see, um, the way they, the way they did their, their work, I mean, um, and the amount of value they provided to the district in that, in that project, um, this is, this is something small, and, um, they have a lot of good people, and we're gonna get some work out of it, and, um, you know, it, it's important for us to, to partner in something like that, that you're comfortable with, that the board is especially comfortable with, and hopefully you are, um, that we can work with as a district, and all other school districts have there, like, like they do, like how we use FCD, you know, for, for most of our, for all of our, you know, like last year. So, um, I, I.
Don't we have a ball field to their name over certain amount, we have to get to that if it's.
Well, VJS is actually soliciting to kind of to biz on this.
For the subs.
Right, for the subs, correct. Very good coordination of it, yeah.
What is VJ, that's a.
I didn't include that for, for any on the balance sheet. There's CMB, fifty-one, thirty-one, but, but it's, uh, I think maybe it has good at half a new, but, um.
Five percent. Frank, I'd feel better if these kinds of things go to the finance committee, that's all we have, again, it's a process, but, I, I don't question the need, I mean, I, how many times I've walked into that and say, "I can go anywhere," and I had guns, a whale way, students are up and down.
Well, I can't say how many.
I don't question the need.
For confident people on the side, and it don't have.
Yeah, just try getting used to going through the process. We, we had two cases tonight, and we have, that's unacceptable, so.
We, we could, there should be a finance committee meeting before the, um, let's see, the next board meeting is April.
June, sorry.
I'm sorry, June tenth. So we, you know, we should be able to get a finance committee meeting either the, the third or somewhere in, before that June tenth meeting, then it can come back as old business.
I, I think, if, in the future, we should really watch that. But I don't see the need unless you really feel there's a need to, to step backwards and, and go back through the committee, and the boys are ready for it, yeah. I think you have a valid concern, and I, however the agenda gets set, watch that in the future, but.
We have kind of a time issue on this one.
Yeah.
We have a time issue on this one, really, right? To get the stuff back in the store, or could we, or could we still do it if we wait to June tenth and go through the process?
But what would be the point of sending it back to committee at this point, before it's already delivered and all?
I can't, you know, I can't speak for the rest of the finance committee, but for me personally, where we do have money in a fund that is set aside for these projects that we haven't been able to utilize, that has a somewhat healthy balance that would cover this and still have some left over, in this particular instance, I would be comfortable voting on it tonight, but I would also understand if it needed to be deferred for process, but I can't speak for the other members of the finance committee.
Would any comment? Uh, no. Okay, um, anyone would like to make a motion, they may do so, or an amendment to them, what's been proposed?
I'll make a motion.
Your, your motion is to approve as submitted?
Right.
Second.
Not to exceed. So not to exceed.
Yeah, you could put the not to exceed motion there, okay? Your motion is second, so, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post carries five zero minutes.
Fill light on that paint budget now. Hey. Are you kidding me? Yeah. More paint on the walls, come on. Five hundred bucks, that's an insult.
Geez.
Is the word conflict, is free conflict.
I didn't say me, but painters around the world need to make a living too.
That's true. All right, item three, D, discuss and take possible action on the co-curricular contract changes. We've had a presentation by Mr. Ellison. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion, or second, we have further discussion.
Well, in, in my emails, you know, it, it bothers me that the middle school is not part of this, and it always can be added to, I understand that, and I don't know why the Mercedes didn't take the advantage of it, and that's all I can say.
Anyone here to make a motion to approve the co-curricular contract changes? I don't know.
Well, I think on this one, there would be time, I mean, I don't think this is a time sensitive, that we couldn't run this properly through the finance and the personnel committee. We're discussing.
Okay. I will say it one more time. Hearing no motion, this will die on the vine for now, but I hear a recommendation to send it back to finance committee, um, for further evaluation, and we can take it up at a later time. Okay, uh, comments from the school board regarding item, agenda items for future considerations? Does anybody have any? I left one, it's probably last second. I can start at the finance committee, Quinn and Stephanie, if you'd like, but work with Doug. There were some exception items noted in the audit, a lot of it was, uh, there were some, uh, changes in, uh, debit and credits and accounts and whatnot, but we do have to, I have to sign a document, and when I start signing documents, that get become a public record, I get a little concerned that we do have our recordings are correct. So I'd like you to take a look at those, uh, exceptions noted by the, um, by the CPAs and, and the recommendation back to us, make that a finance committee agenda item. Other ones?
We, we attended that spring academy.
It's so long ago now.
No, but give a little update to the boy on everything at the WSB.
We'll do that, the number five.
Okay.
Or number nine.
Sorry.
Right. Any other items for future considerations? In that case, Laino, do you have anything that you'd like to announce?
That wasn't meant to be announced.
That was a great segue, though.
I thought you wanted us to put it on the agenda when we're doing that.
Oh, when you do.
Yeah, that's what I thought you wanted.
Maybe just share our thoughts now, if you wanted to.
Sure, we could do that, save the agenda. Kinda late, though. I'll just briefly say that I went to the Common Core Standards presentation at WSB and was reaffirmed that a lot of the things we're doing in a district really line up to those changes. I was very impressed with the, particularly the language art curriculum, how we're going to be teaching and eventually even assessing some, um, uh, critical thinking skills, you always hear that, but it's rare that I've seen it in concrete action and how it really can work in the classroom. And I will, I will put together a little brief, uh, DPI has on their website for school boards, has some really nice stuff that we can go to that would more speak to our role in advancing those standards, and some very nice videos and presentations that you can look at to understand if you have more questions about Common Core. That's all I wanted to say, it was pretty good.
And, well, I have two things, I'll, I'll comment on, I attended a leadership workshop, and what I, what I found was a lot of things that was covered, we covered in that workshop, we covered nicely in our board workshop last week, and I thought that, that was very productive. And the other announcement, or what I wanted to, that I wanted to make mention to, is when we were, you know, looking through the April vouchers and payables, I noticed that we, we received some really nice, our students received some scholarships, um, that there was a scholarship given to Leah Jenk from Waterstone Bank, um, Leah also received one from Holtz Molders, Lizzie Mendon received a scholarship as well from Waterstone Bank, and Jacob Witt received seven hundred and fifty from the Justin Meyer Memorial Scholarship, and Rebecca Wingington also received a Holtz Molders. So, um, I, I don't know, will we recognize those students in the, for the next meeting?
They'll be recognized at the Senior Academic Awards banquet, which, thank you for that segue, is this Wednesday at six o'clock. I will be there, anybody else care to join me? I will buy ice cream afterwards.
Custard.
Custard, I'm sorry.
This is a flow of custard town.
That's.
But yes, that will, it's in the, it's in that program.
And I think it's just great to see that, that, you know, the community, what do I say, businesses contributing to the success of our students going forward.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of that, if you're surprised at.
And there's more that, I know there will be more.
Looking for future employees.
Yeah, that's right. We do have the academic achievement awards for tenth grade tomorrow at seven forty-five, is that correct, breakfast?
Yeah, breakfast gets off at, well, seven thirty we usually get there, but seven forty-five, I think, they do it.
And we are rescheduling in ninth grade one, which was scheduled for this morning for obvious reasons, so we had not picked a date yet for that.
No, I, okay.
Um, other than that, um, I would ask that you return these to our board administrative assistant, because I wanna make sure they're here every week, and take them home, I'll bet you, you will not have it.
Could you get Dr. Holtz?
Thank you for putting, that's a nice reminder, thank you for that.
On that note, when I need to make a motion to, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, thank you for.